Hold it.
We have, everybody can stand for the pledge, stay standing for the landing acknowledgement and then we'd also like to remain standing for a moment of silence for Karen McFarland, who was our health teacher here at Salamaka, who lost her battle with cancer this past week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the living and the dead.
Salamaka City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Wakan, the people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaka School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaka City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there were a couple additions. The, we added the budget PowerPoint presentation that we're going to see shortly. We corrected the spelling of Mitchell Eddie to, name to this spelling from E D D I E to D D D Y. We also added Mr. Stephen Brundage to be appointed as attendance officer and we attached the I E C meeting minutes from March fourteenth.
Okay, then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
My Carrie, second by Dale, all in favor, I oppose abstain motion carried. Item three, we have for special meeting and vote, um, March twenty first, twenty twenty three.
That'll be in the school, high school gymnasium from nine to, or I'm sorry, from noon until nine P M. And this special meeting is for a proposal to acquire seven particular parcels of property.
So please, everybody come on and vote if you can. Next up, ours, our budget presentation. All right, round two, um. So obviously second go around. So for retirements, there's actually thirteen positions that are going to be retired, but it's one twelve people because one person is a T A and a bus driver. But one administrator, four teachers, four T As, three bus drivers, drivers and one monitor. That are all retiring as of six thirty and discussions are underway whether we need to replace them out or in part, or maybe change the buck limit. So looking at district operations across the board, the two twenty-three, twenty-four budget comes in at three and a half million. Current twenty-two, twenty-three budget is at three point one, so it's an increase of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, about fourteen percent. The majority of it, as you see, is illegal and district clerk because of having two votes. Scheduled in there, there's also additional travel for the Board of Education because you guys are taking a more active role in many of the conferences that we attend and the additional personnel position in H R and school association dues because the more impacted they get, the higher our impacted dues are to NAFIS. So those are the real key points and why those increased from last year to due to this year. And looking at facilities and security, wasn't really sure where to put security and I thought about it, well, what did I do last year? And I put it in with facilities last year. So what I was saying is this year because it's really, that's the New York State's technical term is security of plant, which you think sounds funny, but they're standing around guarding the plants, but, um. So we have operations, maintenance and then security. The big, big increase obviously is in security, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand is for the armed security. There's fifty thousand, fifty, sixty thousand for the additional security piece and then all the security detail that's here in all of our buildings throughout the day and throughout the evening whenever we have events. So it's a big piece, but if one point two million dollars saves one thing from happening, it's worth it. So again, that's the increase, maintenance of plant, the majority of that increase is due to the increased cost for uh, the maintenance of the security system of Gallagher and of the phone systems and stuff. Transportation, so transportation, garage, building and contracted transportation. We still have one student who attends St. Mary's School for the Deaf, so that contract will remain for at least several more years because he's just a little guy. The, obviously this went down. And reason being is there were a few contracts or not contracts, but a few pieces of equipment in last year's admissions. And next is instructional. So again, this is first or actually second look, first look at instructional, second look at the overall budget. Um, coming in at twenty-seven point eight versus twenty-four point seven, so it's an increase of three million or thirteen percent. Majority of it is really in, um, salary increases and the other big pieces, the two hundred and seventy-four percent increase in liaisons. It's not like we're adding six or eight of them or anything, but what it is, is the grant programs that they were in are no longer in operation or will not be in operation after June thirtieth, so they need to come back into general life. So that's a big piece of it. Um, that's uh, computer assisted program is up a little bit because we added the, um, one more tech in Seneca, I think it was, that there wasn't a year before and Marsage is placing a lot of equipment. And the increase in psychological services, which really due to an increase in a request for a behavioral specialist. And the increase in athletics is we keep adding teams, um, between varsity and J V and modified and we added, um. Thank you. I feel like we had something in there. We had a trap and then unified, unified sports are also included under athletics. Archery is in there as well. So I, you know, pretty much anything that's involving an athletic skill is in that co-servant. So there's additional teams. There's the additional coaches as well. And uh, benefits. Up little over half a million primarily because of an increase in, um, health insurance, health insurance rates are going up ten percent. While it looks on here, it's only three percent because a lot more people are taking the buyout than had previously, which is good on one hand. Actually, that I'm holding on second, uh, because that reduces our cost for health insurance a lot. Unemployment went down because we keep hiring, we're not letting anybody go. T R S is up because we have a lot more instructions down. And that's really the, the gist of it. Those are going up just because of the sheer volume of people that we have on staff now. That's it. That service and transfers, that service, excuse me, is down overall because our bonds have been paid off, but we will be probably going to bond in, it was going to be June, but it's probably going to be around September, looking at the latest cash flow. When we'll go out to get another bond and the transfers are for summer special ed and to the cafeteria to keep operations rolling there. Because it overall. Yeah. So overall, we're looking at fifty-one five right now versus forty-seven, seven right now. It's an eight percent increase overall, but we're still looking at, again, like I said about retirements, are we going to replace those? There is an ask for eleven positions that are included in here as well and we'll be looking at, are those going to be funded or not? And then we're still taking a look at some of the additional other expenses to find out if we can reduce anything or not. So next time you see this, that fifty-one five is probably going to be much far, I wouldn't say like, not going to be thirty or something like that, but it will be a little bit over. And I think that's the last one I have. Yeah. So any questions?
How's your comfort level with the budget?
Honestly, um, which I'm always going to be with you. If you'd asked me that two weeks ago, I would have went, that's way too high. So what I did recently is I started at forty-seven where we were. I added on the new stuff like the, um, the arms security, I added on the increases in the benefits, I added on the ask for the new teachers. I took out the difference in the debt service. So I added the stuff that was like half two essentially, and we're within half a million to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that number. So I'm a lot more comfortable with that number now. Yeah.
I did that gift that I told them.
There was a bunch of, um, 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 survey instruments purchased consultant contracts last year that were never trusted this year. Yeah, because I looked at that just. Anything else? All right, short enough, Lloyd and Chris.
Are they timing you now?
Yeah, they were. Do we have anybody for public communications? No, about any for title six.
I can provide just a quick update. Uh, let's see. So last week, Friday was the deadline, it's a couple of different deadlines. We needed to submit some data from twenty-one, twenty-two school year and the part one of the twenty-three, twenty-four grant was due. I just wanted to say thank you to particularly Kristen Dudak and Smith, Tiffany Giannici, the three of them really did an awful lot of work over the past several weeks to find out exactly where we were. Um, and consolidate and make sure that we had, we met those two particular deadlines. We are in the process now of identifying what we need to do to spend on the current grant. Um, so that the purchases that we make moving forward are in alignment with the goals and we're planning to do that, we're likely going to ask for another Indigenous Parent Committee meeting probably within a week, week and a half to present a proposal to uh, make some modifications so that we can meet those goals and spend that budget down.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to, uh, central office message. Karen, you got anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I'm gonna say it before marketing. Our kids presented at NAFIS, um, on, um, my, or Sunday and Monday, and it was fantastic. Um, I wish I had the, um, confidence that Mitch and Matt both, they were just up there like they were seasoned professionals at presenting in front of four hundred and eighty-four. For me, a junior's in high school, I probably would have passed out. And then the two girls, Ally and Mackenzie were so scared, um, but they did great as well. Um, they all four presented for the full body on, um, Sunday and then on Monday they held a panel with, um, three, uh, Mackenzie and Ally did a panel with three kids from Two City. And there was probably fifty, sixty, seventy-five people maybe in the, in the room and they did a great job as well, just talking about, um, how, uh, teachers can motivate and engage their students and stuff. So it was, it was really, it was great. At one point Mark, Marcus, we're like rock stars here because seriously, everybody was coming up going, oh my God, your kids are fantastic. This is great program. And you know, that was just really cool. And the people that presented after our kids did on Sunday, pretty much every single one of them commented back on how well our kids did and the programs that were running. So it was, it was very cool.
This is Jimmy. She did steal a lot of that. Um, no, just thank you for the opportunity to be able to go and they were mind blowing. They, I can't agree more. They were seasoned presenters. They had a sense of humor. They were inspiring. They were engaging. Their sense of presence, like the adults in the room were intrigued by them. And then the presentations after they kept intertwining our kids' presentations into their own presentations and bringing it back. I think at one point did they get a standing ovation? Like you stood up and like they got a standing ovation. And what I was most impressed with is they were with kids that they didn't even know and they just met new people, like they naturally just integrated with other kids. They were taking pictures together. They, it was like they were friends for ten years and they were giggling and it was just, it was just really, really nice to see. Um, I want to thank Cheryl and Brooke Canale, Cheryl Johnson and Brooke Canale because their leadership and their guidance for those children was impactful. I mean, they, two people that could guide, I think, any child in this entire district and they were, they were just amazing as well. Um, and to go into something else amazing, today we had a staff development day that included listening to Jerry Brooks and we've all heard Jerry, Jerry. See, we've seen him online and we know he's humorous and we know he's funny, but what I walked away with today was how powerful he was. Um, at one point I was laughing and crying at the same time. I mean, I found myself switching and we were, we walked away with a great message today about, you know, seeing things through other people's lenses and, you know, always keeping in mind, um, students, students dignity should be at the forefront. And it was, it was just extremely powerful and we got a lot of comments about it today. So um, one last thank you to John Haley and his team. Our luncheon today was top notch. People were happy. They were together. They, they ate. It was a taco bar. It was delicious. It just couldn't have been more perfect. Thank you.
All right. Well, we will move on to the board message. Ed, why don't we start with you?
The, uh, well, I'm just, we just want to congratulate all the sports teams that are finishing up on their seasons. All of them across the board. Now we go into that new season, the, uh, also just the, uh, it's nice to see the construction next door is proceeding the way it is and as projects sometimes start, it's amazing that a winner has now showed up. I just want to wish you guys a awesome, nice cold days out there for the last part of the year that we remember what it's like. Because we didn't have much won this year, though.
Well, Carrie.
Carrie is having.
Smile on.
He's still not finished with it yet.
Two more months.
Brad?
I just want to remind the public, anyone who was interested in getting our petitions and you got what, two seats coming up? One of those two.
All right, Dale.
Um, I'd like to, um, say a congrats on, on Warrior Sports Teams as well, um, had a great season. Um, I've heard the scene, some, some good things out of our sprint sports teams. Um, and please, everybody get out to vote if you can, um, next week. Um, it is nice to see some, some construction here and some demolition and, and the Hoist Street. So. That's all I have.
All right, Carrie.
Want to thank all of our staff, teachers, administrators, everybody, my colleagues for doing an amazing job. Uh, it's showing everything related with our kids and the improvements in meeting. I think I've said it now every single board meeting, but thank you all. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, I'm excited winners here. Took four weeks to get here, but it's here. Um, skiing's good. Get up in the valley, check it out. It's pretty nice up there. I'm hoping that it lasts another month or so, but with the winner we're having, who knows? Um, but really, that's it. Too much night.
Well, everyone, I'd like to remind everybody it is my birthday eve. Just in case you forgot, there's just to remind everybody. Now, congratulations to the sports teams and to all of our kids that presented at NAFIS. I mean, I love to hear how the kids go down and actually perform and speak and meet new people. It's like such a great opportunity for them and for the staff that we send. I wish I would have gotten over here to see Jerry Brooks because you know, I said that he was going to be fabulous and hopefully next time, hopefully we'll have him back again so that, um, we can, we, the board can also come and see him. So that would be great. And other than that, uh, again, if anybody has any ideas on how to make our district better, we're always willing to hear it. I don't care if it's students, staff, administrators, somebody off the street, we are welcome to any and all feedback, feedback because, um, we like to hear different ideas and ideas that are outside the box. And, um, with that, don't forget to come and vote. I'll be opening the polls at noon. I'm sure Janet will text me at eleven forty-five to remind me that I'm. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gaiman.
Great, thank you. Um, we're coming off of a really spectacular week and you've heard a lot of the positive energy. And as Karen said, the students really made us, and I'll say us as the adults, like feel like rock stars because when they were done, people from all over the country were coming up saying, that was phenomenal. They did a great job. Can I get your contact information? We'd like to know how you did it. Um, the professional lobbyists from NAFIS said, we have to get your kids on the hill. We need to get this video. Um, we need to start promoting what's happening, uh, in Salamaka to the benefit of the, all of the NAFIS schools. So it was another point to really be proud to be a member of Warrior Nation, uh, this past weekend. Um, and now tomorrow, Mr. Giannici and I and Mr. Hubbard and Mrs. Norkis are headed back to Washington uh, with another group of students to advocate and lobby, uh, for continued and increased funding for students or schools that are impacted by federal lands. So we have meetings, uh, starting Wednesday afternoon or Thursday, all through Thursday and Friday with our elected officials. Mr. Giannici and I met with Congressman Langworthy's office. Like yesterday? And so like days ago, uh, yes, I guess it was just yesterday, uh, just yesterday. And what's interesting and we sort of joke about it is rarely do you ever meet with the actual elected official, you're meeting with their staff, um, or staffer who, you know, the joke there is they, they're not even old enough to rent a car, right? They're young individual to, and especially Congressman Langworthy is new to Congress. So there's a lot of educating and, uh, will continue to be a lot of education. He is a important and that five opponent, uh, school districts are in his congressional region. So he's going to be an important person to make sure we get on our side. The positive thing is he's from the area. I've worked with him through Erie County, so, um, he is very favorable to meeting and I'm sure we'll get him on our side. It just makes sense. Uh, last Thursday was the all choral concerts, um, another great performance by our students. I wanted to thank, uh, Marcy Brown and her technician staff for not just the work that they did today to make sure that that was successful. Um, but we've also had some construction changes that have had to come out with moving some fiber optic lines that could have potentially pulled, held up, uh, construction. But Mr. Brown was on top of that and got that moved along pretty quickly, very quickly. So thank you very much. Uh, let's see. And I think we have already acknowledged that tomorrow, it was, oh, yes, tomorrow, we have a special birthday. Yeah, I know. We all needed to note that in order for this to be a successful evening. So happy, happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you. All right. With that, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay.
Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose abstain motion carried. Item seven, under our new business. Let's see, uh, the resolution of the Board of Education for Salamaka City School District, Kedroga County, dated March fourteenth, relating to certain matters connected with the district's annual meeting and vote fee help on May sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
I mean, you want us to get to the rundown on what this is?
Sure. It's, it's basically telling all about the vote coming up on, um, May, May sixteenth and it's a board is approving the three um, legal ads. And the lawyers had to start that last year or the year before.
Yeah, I didn't really want to read it. That wasn't.
And May sixteenth, that's our normal annual budget vote and election.
All right, then we need a motion to approve the resolution. Second, motion by Ted, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose abstain motion carried. Item B is our allowance dispersment to, um, to talk for mechanical for five thousand one seventy-nine. So we need a motion to approve that this first. Motion. Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose abstain motion carried. Item C are some items to declare surplus. Uh, let's see, we've got Eureka Map workbooks, more Eureka Maps workbooks and some Microsoft web apps. So we need a motion to prepare those items for plus.
Motion.
Okay, Ted, motion by Ted, second by Dale. Are there any questions on any of the items? All in favor, I oppose abstain motion carried. Item eight A is our personnel consent agenda. And item eight B, we need a motion to approve. Eight A. Motion, motion by Carrie. Second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose abstain motion carried. Do we have any staff we'd like to introduce?
I don't believe I see any new staff or here or online. Um, but we will make sure that we welcome them to the Warrior family when they are here in person. I did just want to make a note that, you know, if you look over the past several years, this section usually dies down from October until April or May, meaning we typically don't have appointments and hiring, but that has changed really this year and last year. And I just wanted to acknowledge all of the work that goes in from our district office and our human resources. It's really the entire district office to process over a period of two weeks. Uh, the paperwork because in public education, the volume, shape of work and processes is pretty remarkable. Um, so I just wanted to extend a thank you to those individuals who are working on this.
All right. Item nine is our board information reports. We've got our enrollment, transportation, capital project summary, and then we do have a thank you card from, um, the athlete. It says, um, thank you for allowing my teammates to watch and support me at states. I appreciate it so much and it was a big help. Seeing my team there drove me to perform my best and took away the nerves. Thank you for making it possible. Our land new work. So then the rest of the team also signed it and thanked all of the administration and the staff and the board members for, um, letting them attend to go and watch and participate. So that's really nice. I love that. We also have our Indigenous Education Committee meeting minutes. And our upcoming events, of course, tomorrow is my birthday. Did I say that one more time? Just.
It wasn't listening.
I know, it's not even listening. I don't know who screwed up that. So thank God I'm here. Exactly. Uh, the twenty-first again is our special vote from noon to nine. So please, again, everybody come on out. We do have a finance committee meeting. We're going to start at five. And then there's also an all band concert on the twenty-first and spring parent athlete meeting on the twenty-first. So it's a big day. Uh, and then the twenty-third, we have a personnel and instruction and services meeting minute. And then March twenty-fifth is our Odyssey of the Mind Regional Competition at Wellsville. And the twenty-eighth is our next, uh, Board of Education meeting. So I hope to see everybody there. And with that.
Just no question. Um, I still listed in here, the finance community meetings at five P M, but.
Yeah, we'll push it back to.
Seven.
Um, you have a thing, if I could before that?
Yeah, how much, how long do we need for that?
I'm going to say maybe half an hour, might not even need it.
It's maybe six thirty. And then we have a, we have executive session seven, right? So let me make a recommendation, we move the finance to six thirty. Yeah, and then we'll have a executive session at seven. Um, and then the meeting for adoption of the results of that.
Okay. All right, then. It's correct. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn. Motion. Second, motion by Dale, second by Carrie, all in favor? I opposed abstain motion carried. And I did it before sex, how you like that? It's not watching.